Peterson, North Logan.
Ryan Cox, right, Park.
Amy Zook, Cash County.
Chris Nelson, Seaport.
Ericson Richmond.
Craig Hidalgo, Lardeth.
Jesse Ma, Cash County.
Jeff Gilwell with the CNPO.
And we have Kathleen Alder on the telephone. Can you hear us, Kathleen?
I can.
Great.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and start with the approval of our October 2nd, 2023 minutes. There's any discussions? If not, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I had a couple, I had a couple just small edits. My name's S O N. And then Mayor Thompson's name is spelled at the very bottom as well. Okay, I'll fix that. Like on the adjourning one, Thompson is spelled out. Okay. But, and then I'll just make a motion to approve those minutes with those edits.
Second.
Second.
I did.
More than one second is always.
There. Okay, have motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Our minutes of October 2nd, 2023 have been approved with the directions that were specified. Okay, let's go ahead and review the scoring results. And I'll let Jesse and Jeff and Jesse take care of that.
We'll hold those up again. This is how the ranking fell out, so if there's a motion to approve it or if there's, the policy allows, you know, open public meeting for this, the rank to be changed in any way, so if that would need to come by motion from, or discussion by this body, so.
And a motion in a second.
And a motion, a second for final approval. And then, again, this is, this recommendation's made from this body and then goes to county council for, for final approval. Let's take a vote of this body to send this to the county council for final approvals.
Okay, based on the ranking, uh, this is how it fell out. Uh, is there any concession or any discussion on how the ranking came in? Again, this ranking was completed by each of the mayors. Uh, I appreciate your time today and meeting the deadline we needed to get this done. Is there any discussion or questions? Now's a good time to bring it up. I make, they're here. I make a motion. We accept the ranking.
How second is that?
Yeah, a motion in a second to accept the ranking is laid out. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Okay, you want to explain?
Yeah, I just, just, I always look at this and try to figure how we can fund, you know, most of the projects that are on here. And again, nothing against Nibbly, but they've got a project that they still got to start and finish. If we were able to put that off till next year, then everybody's. But I know that there's things that go with that. When you have somebody come out to do a project twice, you have to have them, you know, yeah, you have to have them mobilize and that's the only thing I had. The other one that was some concern, um, was if Richmond's was more of a private street than a cog project. So I'm not against it, but those were just some questions I had.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, you have a vote on this or, I mean, I'm trying to figure out if this is a time for debate or a time to count votes and move on. I'm happy to have this discussion, but to me, it seems like that would come before the vote, not after.
When you call for the vote, you got motion and a second. Any further discussion? She's asked.
She's going, oh, we took a vote. Oh. We took a vote. I'm happy to reconsider that vote if that's what's appropriate, but we had a motion in the second.
And I asked, there was one nay and I asked her to explain what her concerns were.
That's fine, but if, if we want to have that discussion, I'm happy to have it.
I'd support having that discussion.
Okay.
Um, just because, I, I mean, I, I wasn't super clear on when, when that discussion is had, like, my, I didn't realize that we were cementing this exact funding. I mean, I, I acknowledge the rankings as they are, but I shared some of the same concerns that Mayor Miller has. And I think that's at least a good discussion to have before we finalize.
So, do you want to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion to reconsider. I'll say.
Okay, have motion to re, to reconsider the vote. Now, with given that, what we're gonna have to do now is go through and decide.
So same thing.
So let's.
This is a, take some vote.
You need to take a vote on that. You've got a motion in a second.
Motion to reconsider.
You need to take a vote.
Right, I'm sorry. Insatiable motion.
Is this gonna be just that one item or does it open up the sheet?
It opens up the sheet.
Good.
I'm gonna open up the sheet.
Okay.
So, that was the purpose of asking the question up front about discussions. There was no, just, nobody mentioned anything, so we take a vote. So now we're taking back that vote and we're gonna have a discussion. So all those in favor, uh,
Motion to reconsider.
The motion to reconsider, say aye.
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 Okay, have one nay. So, I'm gonna open the floor for discussion.
Yeah, I don't wanna be on the list to get to talk to.
Pardon me?
I wa, I, I should have said nay. I didn't say anything, but I wanna be able to cover one.
Okay. Okay, so we're back to the discussion point. Let's hear your grievances.
My first. Who's first?
Okay.
Well, obviously, when you look at Richmond's, that takes all wars for the road. But what I wanted to bring up is I've talked to people about this and tried to get information. Without an exception, they're gonna come back and said, it's because of the housing project that's gonna go behind it. And that's gonna let the contractor out of paying his true dues, because we're gonna build it over the public money. And as I look at it and think about it, if that's true, and I think you acknowledged very well could be true.
Uh, I should like to address that now later if you wanna.
Well, let me finish my statement. Um, and I, and I don't know the answer. I just won't tell you. I, I tried to research it. And it was interesting because to a person, they all felt that that was a benefit more for the homes that's gonna be put in them for these market, and that's what we discussed.
Okay. You want me to address that or not?
Yeah, go ahead. I, um, I'm, I'm not even gonna, I was gonna bring a lemon. I plan on making lemonade. I know.
So the area itself, there's one fact and then the other is just the best I can tell you. On our general plan that was just updated, it does show multifamily housing behind Lees. But it's not in the city limits. We've had no discussion with anybody that wants to. So those are the facts as I see them.
But my caution would be, this is what they kept coming back from me, who benefits the most from that road that's built.
Which is speculation. Contractor don't have to build.
There will be, obviously, a lot of people that benefit, um, but it, that's a general concern. I do have an idea. Um, why don't we modify it to just do the one blank that is within city limits and not do the county portion? That would be a win for us.
What does that look like, like in terms of distance?
So about sixty percent of it.
What number are you hearing on homes? I'm hearing some amazing numbers.
We have had, that I know of, Lynn, we've had this many discussions. Like I mentioned, it's not even in the city limits.
And, and I don't know, you know, they throw Harris' name out and all and all, but I have, uh, basically the number that keeps getting thrown around, of the ones I've talked to, is over a hundred points. And if that's the case, that road's gonna be a benefit to them, if you think, I would think that the contractor should basically be responsible for that road.
I can't argue with that. Um, but as I said, there have been no discussions.
And I'm not here to grind any axes. I just, if, if I had a chance, I want to tell you what my, that was the information I received.
If that's a general concern, as I said, you know, about sixty percent of the one street, so this is four of the west, has existing homes off.
Okay.
The other forty percent, uh, Harris approached us two and a half years ago, hasn't said anything to us since then. I think that we will be very open if the cog felt the same way, uh, approving sixty percent of that amount and going to the end of the city limit.
You must be hearing something from that, in that direction. I mean, you may not.
If I had, I, the only thing that I know is there is another store that has been approved to the north of Lees. But again, it's all in city limits. It's all part of that commercial community. But as far as housing?
I could say something too. Um, you know, when I look at their project and I think about with Richmond and you think about it being beneficial to the city and, and how does this rank within the cog, I can see that safety wise, the highway, that is, that's where it fits in there. Otherwise, I don't think it would even be considered.
But as rural, rural communities, Richmond has, doesn't have, I, I understand that. I, I get it. I agree. But I know rural communities have some exclusion because they cannot meet some of the requirements that we have as urban communities. They, they can't beat those same requirements for traffic counts and connectivity and things like that. They can't beat those. But they can meet some of the other requirements, alright?
How realistic is, is it the future developments, whether they be commercial or residential, that they would be able to contribute to the cost of this road? I'm just wondering from a timing perspective.
There's just no way to know. You know, with interest rates rising the way that they are, uh, we've had zero discussions in the last year. Uh, that area behind Lees, nobody has talked to me about it, that I know of, no one's even gonna talk. Weston is here. Have you heard anything from anyone? Second witness, uh, it's maybe being discussed.
We'll know in three or four years.
He probably will. I think that's fair to say.
Does your city, I would require that the developer put their capital there.
Fifty percent of it.
I guess that's what I'm wondering is, is, is this better suited for waiting for that sort of pressure? You know, that's, I mean, that's at least kind of how our project came about is that, um, what our success came about because we had a development move in. And so that's kind of the timing pressure of, I think that usually kind of initiates this process where it's like, well, we need this road. We're not to pay for our half, but the developer is gonna step to the table and prepare for it. And so I guess, kind of double sided, right? You don't know what's going to happen. And I guess the concern is, do you wait till there's actually, um, developmental pressure?
We are getting a lot of feedback from the residents about the back of safety on the road. Our, our desire would be, as we've discussed, the piece that's in the county, we, we approached the county about joining with us on the application. County councils review that they're aware of what the request is. As far as that piece that's in Richmond City's limits, the council's desire would be to, to try and at least take the funding that we can get to finish that first leg of it. That would take substantial portion. I mean, the traffic isn't a lot, you know? Mayor Cox mentioned that. As far, seven hundred people a day, man, so that's a big number. I don't think that there are seven hundred people that they're going that way. Most of them know, though, it's not a safe road to travel. It's not plowed in the winter. And there's all kinds of extenuating circumstances. From our perspective, the safety factor is still the number one reason why we chose the application.
Yeah, and if I could just address, uh, this is coming because of development, not development right on this road, but development right up the road, that we've marked twice. And, um, that's the reason why I am supportive of this project because it's not, it's not a safe situation there with, with people leaving out phones in the highlight from the road next to Lees without a signal. And this provides an alternative route to get a signified intersection. Of course, you can't force people to go that way, but it provides a safe alternative route to signalize.
One more question. Uh, you said nothing's been said or done, but I was told that they, they had already checked to see if there was culinary water available to have such a subdivision in the Richmond city said yes.
To someone developing behind these? And the answer, Lynn, that's a great question, but the answer's pretty clear. Uh, Lees, that the wa, the culinary water was on the other side of the street, so it was on the east side. Lees had to bring it under the road. And they had to stub it to the west, southwestern edge of their property.
That wasn't my question. That was the question was, that Richmond city had said there is enough water to support the gold family.
Well, there is enough water, but I think every community around the table, for the most part, would have the same answer.
No, just part of your. Well, that wouldn't be the case. Not at all. Okay.
The line, the line that that comes off of, Lynn, was put in twelve or thirteen years ago. That is the first use of the line ever since then. For Lees.
I, I can't. No, I'm done. I, I just wanted to bring that up that I didn't run into a single person that felt that their contractor shouldn't be, at least they want, most of them said they felt they should build the whole thing, but at least fortunately financially responsible for that road. I drive, I have driven that. I've never passed a car on, by the way, but I've driven it a couple times. And it, I'd rather go out on the main highway right now to get an overview.
So obviously, you've talked to several people and as a result, your ranking was probably as well.
Really? Well, because.
So is mine, because of the possibility developed, but I'm not basing that off of a knowledge and fact. I'm looking at it based off what I expect to see. You're claiming that people are coming to you. Who are these people?
I don't wanna do names, but I can tell you that they are, a couple of them are on the council. Okay. And, and, and they're, they're people that I believe know what's going on.
And that's what impacted your vote.
Absolutely.
Okay. I've got my reach for my vote, but apparently there's others here around the table that felt like that was what we thought.
I wasn't here to grind an ax. I wanted to put my statement.
Good, and I appreciate that. But I wanna make sure that we're fair. Because what you're saying, when you start to say, I'm not gonna name names, everybody around this table has people that have said something about every one of these projects. So we need to bring the tables facts.
Do you want me to list the names you really want me to?
No, I want you to bring the table facts and not just.
Okay, but they're saying that it's not a fact unless I give you the name. Do you want me to provide names? Do you really want that?
No, I think you already done your voting. But let's not.
So where are we going?
Where are we going with this? Does this change anybody's vote?
Well, I didn't expect it.
Well, I think we have to vote because we reopened.
Yeah, right. But I mean, on this project alone, does anybody change your vote?
Does.
That's my point of the question.
Does anybody? Mayor said something about differing the, the county portion? Sixty percent.
I, I am all for playing ball here.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just trying to move forward, whatever our options are. Either continue to vote on what we currently have or what do we do?
Yeah, might get some other sub options. Your names.
Um, one other comment. I mean, Nibbly, they're Phase Five project. It's a great project. It needs to happen. But, I mean, we've only been able to fund half of that, so they're not gonna be able to get that done. I mean, I totally agree that their Phase Three and Four funding shortfall, you know, that's rank number two. It should be. They need to finish that. I mean, I'm not sure they can move ahead with that partial amount. So what if we said, you know, let's move that till next year. That allows some of the other rural projects and so on to get funded. And then, you know, Nibbly can come back next year with Phase Five, which again is a great project. We just, you know, would, would allow them to get three and four done first. Um, and again, I think there have been some other press questions also about the cross sections on that road. Um, I guess you haven't started three and four yet. I mean, it, it's very much a hard way feel. And I think there's just been, been talking to some other people. It's like, does that give you added capacity when you, when you need it? I mean, there's some great pedestrian infrastructure and bike infrastructure on both sides of the road. Is there a, a way you could, you know, maybe plan for future?
Us, Mayor Dan, can we, can we finish first of all?
The problem is, is they're kind of interrelated because if we, if we free up that money on either side, then
Okay.
then it kind of takes the pressure off either Nibbly or Richmond here. So that's where it's kind of tricky. And I would echo what Mayor Dan said. I, I would love to hear Larry's thoughts on the cross section.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is a great project. I mean, you all have supported this in the past. We were halfway funded for Phase Five last year and Nibbly pulled its request for funding. As a result, we've been funded for half twice. Well, it turns out one half plus one half does not equal a whole. And so, uh, we're not inclined to voluntarily, this body has the power, we're not inclined to voluntarily pull the almost half funding that's awarded for Phase Five. Instead, we wait one year and we'll come back and we'll say, let's do the other half of Phase Five. I mean, the valley could sit and wait for half funding, half funding, half funding, half funding that never let adds up to full funding. I mean, that's the road we took last year. Alright, so there's no guarantee.
Last year wasn't the Phase Three and Four fully funded, but there just was a shortfall because of the price. So it was fully funded at the beginning.
Phases Three and Four were fully funded. At the beginning, we had the shortfall. My apologies for that. I wish I could change. Phase Five was funded for half. Nibbly City turned that funding back to the cog and said, you guys, you know, let's use the other voting to decide. Um, uh, and, 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 and you know where the benefactor was of that, right? And it made sense, but to do this over and over and over, I had in my presentation, we didn't play it, thank goodness, because I had a recording of Jeb, not Jeb, uh, George H., George W. Bush. Uh, and I was gonna play that clip to the engineers in the room to say, and George W. Bush goes something like this, well, you can fool me once and shame on me, but fool me, what, what, I'm not gonna get fooled again. And so, um, I, we figure that a bird, half a bird in the hand is better than a bird in the, a half a bird in the bush is better than a bird in the hand. I'm just as bad as George. But the fact is, we can get half funding and half funding and half funding, right?
You didn't make him look bad.
He makes that easy.
Yeah, fund this pretty easy.
And so, and so it's our intent and it's our understanding of the way the cog and CNPO works and everything else is that money that we have been awarded will be available next year unless the cog decides and the county council decides to pull what's already been awarded. That, you know, that's within the power of this body to make that recommendation. But, you know, I'm not gonna try to change anyone's mind about what happened with Phase Five this year, but we're ready to go. We're ready to start and end this project by the end of October, a year from now. We can do Phase Three and Four and Phase Five all at the same time. We've gone out, as we talked during the presentation, we've gone out on full construction bids. That's when we realized we had the shortfall. We've used those full construction bids on Phase Three and Four to give you the estimate on what Phase Five is. We're very confident in that. Um, I'm not gonna get fooled again. And, you know, I have to tell the, the mayors that even spoke to me last year that said, hey, I just can't go all out on three, four, and five for you guys. And that's the way it turned out last year, and I accept that. And those mayors, I also have to thank, you know, the ones that spoke to me and said, uh, but we will try to get Phase Five funded for you guys next year, and they lived up to that. Um, so we're not inclined, we can do three, four, and five just as efficiently. Um, we're gonna have a year delay in order to, to do five. If we wanna talk about engineering, then let's talk about that in the C-TAC meeting. Uh, and didn't come up in C-TAC. Um, maybe, and, I mean, I will be talking to each of you if you'll take my phone call after all this and I'll say, what is it that you don't like about this project? Is it a cross section? Is it a timing issue? Is it because we came back for more money on three and four? I will, as, as, as a way to get to yes, try to understand, you know, why we've twice funded Phase Five by a half. Because I think it's an important road and, um, I'll come back, not in an argumentative way, but just try to understand what questions we need answered. If it's technical, we'll deal with that. I'll bring you all the engineering I need to. We'll let the C-TAC deal with that next year if they decide not to deal with it this year. That's fine too. I mean, this isn't the first time that this road cross section has been proposed. It's been proposed on Phase One and Two. That's the roundabout at thirty-two hundred south. That's built. It's in the road, right? It's in the ground. Phase Three and Four is the same cross section and as Phase Five. So if that's the wrong cross section, let's have that discussion, but let's have it with the professionals, not as, not as mayors.
But with the seven oh six thousand that we, if we adopted this, that we've been awarded, I mean, you said we could finish those projects by next October, but I mean, can you really finish it if you're only funded?
No, no, the, 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 the schedule was receive the award for Phase Five and the cost overrun for Phase Three and Four and be done a year from now. So that didn't happen. I understand that. I'm willing to accept that, but we, with Nibbly City cannot fund the other half to, to two thirds of this project.
So do you just kind of hold that money, knowing that you'll use it if you get the other half funded next year?
Correct. We don't hold it, but, uh, CNPO holds it, right? The county holds it, right?
Larry, I think that's a great point regarding the co, cross section, and that's probably something that we should have caught, um, that, me included. Um, but I think my concern personally is just that there's twenty-two feet of road and then there's, what? Twenty-two feet of park strips, another twenty-two-ish feet of active transportation. Um, I just am concerned from a cog standpoint. I think, again, I echo what Bear Dan said. I, I think it's a great project. I just wanna be able to have a role for cog purposes that can grow with, with the population growth. Um, and I think, I don't know, Mayor Hidalgo, I think you'll have to kind of weigh in on this procedurally, but is there a way to to, to kick that back to C-TAC formally for some input on the cross section? Because I agree with you, Larry. I'm not the best person to give you advice on a cross section. I just know that when I look at that, that I have some concerns about the long-term viability of it.
Okay, and so from a political point of view, I, I well remember a presentation that, it is the midterm Utah League of Cities and Towns, and with presentation, he was a keynote speaker. He said, here's what we do. We all overbuild roads. We decide this is gonna be a thirty-five mile an hour road, and this is what it's gonna take. It's gonna take this kind of asphalt, this kind of road width and so on, this cross section. And then I say, you know what? We need to put a safety margin on that. We need to add to that. And so the first engineer adds a safety margin, the next engineer adds a safety margin, and pretty soon, we don't have a thirty-five mile an hour road anymore. So I am, and I benefited greatly from going through Centers for Disease Control, Walkability, Active Transportation to say, we need to put our roads on a diet. We need to build them appropriately for what they're supposed to do. If you all need, we'll come back next year. We can have the, we can have a prolonged review from the cog this year, uh, from the C-TAC this year if you want, but we will come back with the number of cars that that road can handle, based on the design and based on the bull bouts and chicanes and everything else. I mean, all I know right now is, compared to the engineers, that's a thirty-five mile an hour road. So speed to me is the biggest influencer on how fast, how many cars, uh, can travel that road. If you have questions about that, we'll deal with it. We'll deal with it now. We'll deal with it next year. It's up to you.
I think it connects with a thou, uh, ten thousand west, right, or thousand west, that's west, sorry, yeah, right?
But it's not a Tenth West Road.
Okay. I think that's just something that maybe was, maybe unfair as we were discussing it. Like, I think that's what we were kind of picturing. And I, again, this is really just coming from.
It's a commuter road, right? It's a thirty-five mile an hour commuter road. And, you know, you can ask me for as many guarantees as you want. And, you know, you can ask me for as many guarantees as you want, but it's a thirty five mile an hour commuter road.
Can I ask a question of the staff? What, what are the requirements and our rules for that road? And, and this is private info.
Want me to start?
Sure.
So. We. We have requirements that it be built to a collector class standard. And there's some loose guidance from federal highways on what a collector road is. We're actually gonna be talking about later in the agenda. Changes for next year where we're gonna start talking about. Maybe having some target cross sections for roads. Uh, of what different types of roads would be built to. And that doesn't mean that we would have to rigidly hold to that because sometimes there are reasons. Do context sensitive designs or you have geography or whatever. But really, we don't have. We don't have uh, an approved cross section which says it has to be like this. I mean, as we've looked at this, it certainly isn't. I don't know if you want to call it experimental. I mean, it's a, certainly for Cache Valley. The road cross section is, is different. Uh, with the dedicated bi-directional bike lane. But. I don't know that it's necessarily a technical question as much as it is just a policy question of what type of roads. Does a cog want to build? I mean, I think it's. It's built. To the, to the special standards and. It's just a, a decision. Is that the type of road you want to build? I mean, it does give emphasis to active transportation. Uh, in a big way. And it's, it's, it's honestly, I don't know, kicking it back to C-TAC. You know, you, it's, it's kind of more, it's not a technical question. It's a. It's, it's sort of a policy question. You want, now there are pluses and minuses. I mean. I, I struggled with, yeah, bi-directional bike lanes. At some point when they end, they gotta transition over. And that, and we raised some of those questions. Uh, with Nibley all along. For us. When. Nibley presented the cross section in previous applications and we're really open about what it was and the cog. I don't want to say it seemed okay with it, but there wasn't. Concerned. It was a little hard for us to backtrack on that and second guess it. When that was proposed, but.
So you're saying Jeff, that it does meet our standards.
We don't have. Real hard ordered, oh, hard coded standard that was suggested.
And we don't because we want flexibility. We did our. So we can put in our rules. And have this hardcore, but you better all be willing to live by. So yeah, I think about that.
I think we're, we're believing the C-TAC has given us something that it's not given us. Because first off, I, I keep that this body reviewed it last year. And approved si-. Phase three and four, which we did. But if you look at the packages, there's not a cross section. I've looked it up. I've got it pulled up right here on.
I think it would be in the plan set.
On the links that you have on twenty twenty two, it's not in there.
And it was in, the real thing was it was in the presentation when they presented. They did talk about it.
The thought is a bunch of. More new mayor favors, na- mayors, but twenty two feet of. Road. Twenty six feet of active transportation. Is that what it is? That's what this is. So. If. If that's what we're good with, then that's what we're good with.
And I think there's a difference in like. You're saying it's what the mayors want. It's not a technical issue, but really, I mean, we've been, all been in office. A lot of us have been in office for months at that point. Like, do you want the burden to be on the mayors? To provide a technical analysis of that?
The C-TAC score is.
No, the, the C-TAC score doesn't address those design issues. The C-TAC review does. And remember when we provided, kind of gave everyone a chance to. Comment on plan sets and technical issues and. And, uh. You know, that is any jurisdiction could have raised that concern in their staff. Staff participates in that as well. We didn't raise it because it had already been brought up in prior years and the cog. Didn't challenge it, so we didn't feel it was really appropriate for us to re-challenge it. But, but yeah, I mean, that would be a spot and we've talked about beefing that technical review up for next year, giving more time. But that's where, if you remember that log that we provided. That's cog staff as well as all the C-TAC members. Were able to review things and, 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 and bring up issues of concern. Cities were given a chance to respond and then cog staff were given kind of a final word on it. But. Yeah, I mean, it.
Back in the twenty twenty two plan set. And I can see it here, those cross sections are shown. Again, this year, that's where we moved to more of that. Information sheet that included the cross sections. Cause at that point, previous to that, it would require the mayors to go in. The application was twenty five pages long. There were all the plan sets and that's why this past year, we moved to that cog information sheet. So it was more of a, hey, in four or five pages. The mayors can get the bulk of the information versus. Over here, there's fifty, sixty, a hundred pages of information. How can we make it more consolidated? Trying to make those improvements year over years, which say. Mayors are bringing concerns. How can we adjust that? How can we make it easier for the mayors to? Find those details, know what they want to do, understand the scopes. Safety issues, other issues that, that are presented there, so.
We've, we've had this discussion. I, I know not everybody here has been. At these meetings for years, but we've had this discussion many times over the years. Uh, firstly, I'm an advocate for. Having some standards and I, I. I've said many times that I, I think we should have stricter standards. We need to have a discussion though. Let's shoot the body that sets that policy and I. I think in fact that we should have standards for other roads. In addition to the ones that are being funded. I think we should say, if we're gonna give you money. For these roads to improve traffic flow, then we want other roads of a certain type to meet certain standards as well. I think we should have very high standards because the, the overall goal of this money is to include traffic flow across our town. And if we're giving people money to fix some roads, but other roads are, uh, being purposely. Bottlenecked or, or. Slowed down so that people won't use them or won't drive through certain areas, then that's counterproductive to our, our overall goals. Uh, we, we've got Main Street out up here that everybody uses because it's. It's really the only road round of that size and we're, we're working right now with, with Logan City. We do a lot more Logan. And trying to figure out solutions to make other routes that would, would be able to carry out as much traffic. Uh, or at least lighten the road. But I think that's a policy discussion that we should absolutely have here. Uh, about what the standard should be. However, in, in the current, uh, the current round. We didn't have those. Those weren't, those weren't rules that we set with one. Requirements that, that were given and for us to. Change the rules, Midstream, we're actually way more than Midstream talking about phase five of this and four phases and. Uh, certain cross section. I, I don't know if that's fair to change rules. And I say that as somebody who, I used to work for Nibley and I didn't like this cross section myself. I. I advocated with elected officials for a different cross section than this. Uh, but, but that's what those elected officials chose to do in their community and they had a right to do that and fully cover the rules they could do that. And I think we have to play by the rules that we said at the beginning.
But it sounds like there aren't specific rules, but it's very much just. You're getting signals from the mayors. And I think you're getting the signal that we're concerned about the, the utility of this road or the long-term viability of it. And so I think having that missed it at last year and in C-TAC this year. Uh, like, does that mean the ship has sailed? Cause I don't, I mean, like, this isn't. I, 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 and I think this is a broader policy question, but it's kind of frustrating for me to hear, well, mayors, you didn't speak up. Frankly, I don't look at cross sections and I'm not a qualified person to do that, but I know when I see it. When it's not moving traffic, when we're prioritizing active transportation far more than moving cars.
With all due respect. You're saying that C-TAC missed it. Right? We don't know what C-TAC missed or.
Well, that's what they're saying is.
Are you saying C-TAC missed this?
Well, I, I'm saying, uh. I'm saying that cog staff. When we did our technical reviews, we didn't raise it again because it had already been addressed by the cog. In prior year.
Done anything, looked at those specific cross sections?
Other C-TAC members that are. And that's, you know, a representative from each city. I mean, even this round. More, more specifically with this round. I mean, they had opportunities. It was fair game for them to review your plan set. Uh, that's. Bring that as an issue. Remember in the log? Where those issues were raised by individual C-TAC members, unfiltered, unedited. If someone wanted to raise an issue with your cross section. They could have. And so some of that is. Charging your staff, Mayor, when you said we didn't know what to look at. Now, some of this can be solved by really charging your staff in the C-TAC to take a pretty aggressive review because they can raise those issues. You know, on your behalf too, from a more technical point of view. But, so C-TAC, it was fair game. But anyone challenged the cross section. I don't know if some of the reasoning for that. Was the same reason we didn't because it had already been addressed, was part of a prior plan set review. But. But yeah, it wasn't, I mean, C-TAC did, did review it.
Right. And so I just think we should stop short of saying, well, C-TAC missed it, so we have to fix it.
I guess I'm just restating maybe poorly what Jeff said, that they should have been raised at C-TAC or not at all. Like, that's kind of the message that I'm getting is that, that ship has sailed. Like, that this is not the time to actually. Raise issues about the specifics of a project.
I, I will agree with, with you on that, McGee. Um, and. We'll be back next year. We'll bring you engineering. We'll bring you whatever it is that, uh, will either. Uh, convince the cog that. The other half should be funded or convince the cog that we made a big mistake.
Likely by that time, that, that rest that'll likely be constructed. Driven it, used it.
Forty six hundred south will be connected. It is connected out to the highway. There's, there's gonna be traffic on twelve hundred. Even if it doesn't go all the way through twelve hundred west, even if it doesn't go all the way through to the north.
Can I make one more comment? To me. I mean, we've got the Richmond road in question. And that takes up. All the other smaller ones for the smaller. Rural cities. It, it gives it to them and. Completely gives them nothing. I'm a little concerned that that's not spread a little bit more, but yet I can see. I understand all the, our, you know, that. What's going on and I'm ready to just vote and say, you know, let it be. But I am concerned about the. Smaller ones that we set this money aside for to help them because they just don't count.
But you, you can't do that and I'm gonna, you know, so we can't do that. We need to have these discussions. Because later on, as we go through this. We're gonna start talking next year. And these are some of the things we're gonna have to address. We're gonna have to address. What is our standard gonna be? Are we gonna require all these cross sections? If we're gonna require, then we require. That way the questions aren't coming up. Two weeks after we voted and seen the presentations, they come up in the presentations. A lot of what I'm hearing, these questions should have came up in presentations. They didn't. And I gotta ask why? This puts it back on us as mayors. We've got staff, most of all of you, I don't. You got staff. They should be bringing this to your table and saying, you know, these. This presentation here that you're looking at, you got to ask these questions. What's going on? If we're not informed. As mayors, then we're gonna get it wrong. So we don't want it. Mayor Pam.
Well, in that last meeting, we did discuss Richmond. And, and you did tell us to go look.
And that should. Obviously people didn't agree with my vote. Because they got.
And I did follow what you said.
So what I'm saying is. The, the. Questions and stuff being brought up is valuable. It's gonna be lessons learned, but we need to apply. So let's not go quiet after this goes. And not make the changes we need to make. If we need standards, let's get, let's get a standard requirement in there. And I, I fully support. What Executive Zuck said. I believe in standards. That way everybody's measured equally. But those standards, they're me, the small fan.
What is our standard now for a split deal where it's half county?
As far as.
Who's responsible? I mean, how, how do you just determine this panel?
That usually that's just been worked out between the different jurisdictions.
If it's county, you're saying it's. Well, we're saying this road is half. Absolutely half.
So Mayor, some of it has to do with. Does the county see this? As having a dog on a fly. In other words, if it's a, if it's a road running in an annexation area, it's likely to annex when it develops. But honestly, the county's gonna look at that and say. This, this isn't our response. I mean, it, it doesn't serve our citizenry. It's gonna be annexed into a particular city. You know, does that make sense? It, it's less of the county direct interest. So they may participate like the county did. Saying, yeah, we're supportive of it, but we're not giving you any money. Whereas another road. Mon's Corner or another more regionally that is more of interest to the county. Uh, because it serves their citizenry, it connects communities, it fits more into what the county is. You know, those are the ones they're gonna focus on. Uh, but yeah, we've had this before. I think what you're asking is. Is this one, even if the county was participating, it would still be rural because of the location. You're right. We have an island between us and if we, the county was to do something there, it would probably go against urban.
Well, here's what, here's my actual thought. I didn't mean to get near America. I'm not, I really don't have a fire, I was honest. But here's my thought. So you said, and, and I, I really appreciate it. We'd be willing to just go one lane, do our part and do. And what went through my mind is then next year, the county will come back and say, we need funding to finish that road. And we've had that happen before and can't deny it.
So let me clarify that. I'm not talking one lane. I'm only talking about amending it so we all use your department's enrichment.
Okay, well, my, my stop comment is the same. And they come in and say we need to finish it.
Well, they may or they may not, but if we amend it, I've got the number here. I may not be supportive of trying to do a piece for the county, but maybe they should do themselves. And so if we just said, look, our request is going to be amended to five eighty two, five fifty three. That will finish the road within Richmond city limits and leave three eighty eight on the table. We will not come back for two more years for another request. We don't have one.
Now, I, I thi- I think I missed. And make myself very clear. All I'm saying is. What went through my mind is there's a road that's not done, that's in the county. And will that come back and then?
Nothing precludes the county from coming forward.
And then next time we're out again because those are the county.
If we vote that way. But if the C-TAC gives it fourteen again. Yeah, you're screwed because it doesn't matter what your vote is.
And I'm not mad at it. Trust me. I can't bear it.
Mayor views.
I think we can beat it all night long and we don't want to do that. I think we've got. Ideas on the table that we need to talk about for next years. At this point, we have scores. I think we need to go with it. I think that ship has sailed personally, so. I don't, I, I don't know that we as a group want to be taking away or. Or putting in certain places. I don't think that really works very well. What I've seen work well over the years is if the ones, the jurisdictions are willing to give up. And do that, I think that is something they can do. Otherwise, we've got the scores. We go for a vote. So unless we're gonna beat it to death some more, I think it's up to these two. He stated very much so how he feels. I think Mayor Erickson can discuss how he feels, decide what he wants to do, and I think we should vote.
And I'm already done.
Or it's North Logan or Hyde Park, any money isn't go to Nibley, it wouldn't go to other rural or urban.
Communities, it would still go to the unfulfilled portion of it.
Well.
Yeah, I think that would be down.
Yeah, so it would. Yeah. But but.
And then you could probably amend. Nibley's to be a partial.
Okay, we could do, there's a couple of things we could do here. Okay, let's talk rural area. Okay, let's get on one meeting here. Let's talk the rural area. Jeff, can we take what uh? Mayor Erickson's trying to do and say, okay, I'm gonna do this. Will that fund? Trenton and Amalgam. So to speak, or Newt.
You would probably spend. It would go, I asked you, you could typically put down the list and was go to mend it.
I mean, that would be the tradition. I mean, that would be the logical. But I will say that. What state code says, it says if the council of government. Prioritizes a project over another project with a higher rank. Under this weighted criteria system. The council of government shall identify the reason for prioritizing that project over another project with a higher rank. Uh at the public meeting. And make the reason describe, the reason for that described publicly available. So. So I think you can. I don't, my interpretation, you can change this however you want. You just gotta do it in a.
But the reason was because we have a rural set aside. Because we have a policy for setting aside. Certain percent of the.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is.
If you wanted, instead of giving them a demand, and you said, we're gonna give it to them now, that this body could make.
Why would we give it to Mendel or not, or to Richmond? Is that what you're saying?
If if he's saying, he's saying the Richmond adjusted.
If I make a motion and everybody accepts. That we take five eighty-two, five fifty-three, that leaves three eighty-eight available to then triple down into the rural communities. And then you find out what's left over. Then Larry can look at it and decide whether he wants to go in here. And everybody just.
Yeah, the traditional way is if you. Free up money. And you could go down the list, you would just go down the prioritization list unless there's some. Justifiable reason to change that, does that make sense?
He would stick with the rank.
But it will make that money very important to the citizen. Not to the.
Jeff, explain what you're trying to tell mayor.
Or me?
Yeah.
No, I was just saying, no, again, I tend to work too hard. But again, if if we took a portion from that, if. Would Richmond be willing to give up, if they gave up a portion of their piece and improved the North-South Road? It would still leave an unimproved piece in the county that would make that connection. That would still be. That existing sixteen, eighteen foot wide. Dirt road through that piece. So again, any future. That's counted on both sides of that. Any development in Richmond would take annexation. Development into Richmond again from the county side. We've never. Either in that. Piece, but.
But it's within the. Council's purview to make an exception, identify the.
Yeah, that's body. It's undone as a full body, they could make any change. For their.
That's how I understand it.
So uh, I'm just. Are you saying that Richmond? Took this now for the vote. Do not recommend pavement.
So Jeff, use your map.
About forty percent of that entire length will be the way it is now. Gonna get us that much further, but getting people off it. Doesn't really solve our problem.
Well, that's the problem. It doesn't solve the problem.
It helps, it helps.
But there would still be a piece.
But there's still a piece that just. Is not maintained. And the county will not file that.
No.
Yeah, so. If I if I may, just to, if I can put on my, kind of my clock that one. Currently, this piece, this is where Lees is. This piece right here is the piece that's counting. It's county parcel here and county parcel here. And then this is where the Richmond City Line. Comes. So again, what mayor said, if this people was given up. It's not funny, then this would be a county piece that would be paid, would currently still be a sixteen wide foot wide dirt road. With county properties on both sides.
You need to understand. That. We will create a paved road.
From the state road.
State road to there.
And Lees is paved from here to here.
But from there to there, it's dirt, county will not flower. So it's only open part of the year anyway.
What if we, well.
And what creates? While I didn't want to get a coke during the night.
They're not gonna flower dirt road.
If it was paved, the Richmond was gonna make.
Ten years to get our best.
Yeah, we paid the whole thing. Richmond's agreed to keep it all. Right? That's.
Yes, that is part of it, yeah.
Yeah. So it benefits citizens. Mayor Miller.
I make a motion that we approve the rankings as is. I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, second, we go back and approve the rankings as is. All in favor? If I, you should ask for a discussion, right?
I had a discussion.
I just wanna make sure that everyone. Okay, I don't wanna go back to your vote, right? Do we have any discussion? I tried this once before, Mary. Did you let it go? Nope, that was after the vote. Any discussion? Yeah, I I have a point. Oh. Okay, Mayor Jacob. Okay, never mind. What's your point?
I don't need it.
Go ahead.
I I want you all to believe that Nibley's interest in this road is bigger than Nibley. This is a great project. This is a road that's gonna connect. Hiram. To the Logan Cash Airport. This is not a selfish thing that we're trying to achieve. I hope you agree with that. And it. It would help that I stop riding my bike to show that I don't have a conflict of interest in these meetings. I'd be happy to do that too. If 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 the council, if this, if this council of governments wants to consider taking the Nibley. Funding away. On partial phase five. Which we've been down literally that road before. I would entertain that, but I wanna get this thing built. And so it's gotta be on some kind of. Scout's honor. We promise we're gonna fund this whole thing. Next year, and we're gonna get this thing connected, but I can't ask you to make that sort of guarantee. And if you ask me to make that guarantee, I'd say no. But if you can offer me that, we could go there.
You can. In my community, we've kicked the can down the road so many times. But now I'm paying more to do what should have been done twenty years ago. So what we're looking at here is. We've had a run, people voted the way they did. And that's good. We've had a discussion after the fact of the expulsion, I apologize for that. We've had a discussion after the fact, which has been very valuable. Which is gonna be extremely valuable in the next part of our meeting. So the point, is there any other discussion on this? Because.
I'm gonna, I. To to Larry's end. That seven hundred and six thousand dollars is not gonna be worth seven hundred and six thousand dollars next year. That's and and. And I appreciate what Larry's saying. And and I do know the road is. The road. I don't think there's a person in this room that disagrees with the road. Having that. The ability to transport and having the vision for the long-term transportation, that's the concern. And putting us at ease on that part. I'm okay with. With funding it all next year. I'm. I'm okay with that. I'm. What I don't like. Is when we have funds, and I know we have a lot of funds sitting in there that could be used. We sit on them year after year after year. They're not making a ton of money. They're actually losing value. Because we get awarded a grant and we sit on it for three, four, five years. And that grant is not worth what it was when we got it. So then we're back here asking for more money, more money.
True, fair point. So I will make this promise to you, Mayor. Uh if phase five is fully funded. In the balance next year, I won't ask for it again.
Wow, thank you, Larry. I that's.
The first step. Is there any way, because. We we told Nibley last year, thank you for withdrawing your application. We'll remember that next year. We're at next year. We're still not fully funding them.
But we didn't, but we, but we ended up funding again the same ones that we funded last time. And we understand that. I get that. I know that very well.
So why can't we decide today? Next year, we'll fully fund you, but we're not gonna give you seven hundred thousand now. We're gonna use that money to fund Millville and Providence and Mendon right now. I can't do that.
So uh. And this might be a question for a legal review of what's allowed, but. The state health code only allows, it allows you to submit one funding recommendation per calendar year to the county council. You could. Our current policies don't allow us. Well, my interpretation of our current policies, it don't allow us to commit. A future year amount. In that recommendation. We're actually gonna be talking about. A policy change to incorporate where we all, where we do a two-year recommendation. Where we look and 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 commit a full two years. And only do this every two years.
And that. And if we do that, we can't connect future.
Well. I'm just saying the current policies. It was. I think.
That's that part.
We have the case of.
That part's not settled. It's just hard.
Correct. Yeah. So I mean, I. I I. I don't know. I mean, there's always. You always hear the thing of a a present council can't commit a future council. I don't know how the county council would react to a two-year. Type process.
I I tell our city council, the next city council will be no smarter than this city council.
Yeah, so that's why I say it might be a question for the county too. Of even if we did a two-year funding recommend. Recommendations. I don't think there's anything in state code that would prohibit us. But there is that issue in one council. One set of elected officials who needed to commit a future set of elected officials.
We are planning that scene, by the way, tonight. So you heard him. We are considering that, and that's something all of us need to consider. Uh of doing it every two years instead of every.
We're at the point that we had a first and a second and half a vote.
No, we were, we were at the discussion.
Proposal.
And now. Any other discussion?
And Larry made. A potential proposal if if. Anybody wanted to want, but.
I appreciate the discussion.
Okay, any other discussion? Are we ready for a motion?
No, we have a motion, a second to approve it as it sits.
I just wanna make sure. All in favor of approving as it sits? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The vote, I understand. Okay, one X, one X six. Okay, so the. From the vote of the talk. The. Vote as presented stands approved.
So this will go before the county councils. We'll fill up, we'll pay, all the paperwork to get on the county, county council, it should be on next Tuesday's. Agenda for council, council approval.
You know what brings, this is extremely important for each mayor to understand. When we go as a cog. And vote and go before the council, it's what I have to do. And I can sit there and tell them. That. The cog. Represents the citizens of this county that voted this way. It's pretty hard for them to say no. So that's how vital it is to work through these discussions like we've had in life. I'm not being critical of any discussion. And I hope that I don't come off that way, which I do. But I'm not. It's valuable. It's important. And if. I try to have tendency of good thing done, but sometimes you have to wait. And this goes, and appreciate your input and everything else. Because it's gonna go over a lot better if the council, if we stand together and I can say. The majority of them voted in favor of this. This is the way it went. And this way it's gonna go. Now, it's just as important as we go forth now. That we take the discussions that's been happening. And apply it to our policies where needed. If you want cross-sections, you must decide that. We'll do cross-sections. We have a tool, we have the ability to just. To write our manual and it needs to be written. It's just important that we read the manual and understand it. So I hope that all of you have done that, because it's vitally important what we do.
To that end.
Mayor Peterson.
Um, so as I was going through this, it it appears that, I know we're trying to work through this, but it appears that the C-TAC score. Tends to have an outsized impact on how the rankings end up. Um, because if you look at how the mayors scored this. Um. The C-TAC score completely negates anything. So I think that even if we voted in a way to say like, hmm. I don't love this project, it didn't matter because the the C-TAC score was weighted so heavily. And I think that that's something that we need to reconsider. Because I think it, I think that the mayor's voice in this is really important. Um, and along with that, I think that. Um, I don't know how to go about this, but I think that the C-TAC needs to be a a maybe a. A place where. It's really kind of, it's not pre-decided. I know that there's a safety score that's decided outside of C-TAC. And I think that that ends up weighting the overall C-TAC score in an outsized way. And. Um, so it almost, if you look at this, it almost makes it so that the mayor's votes. Like. The, you know, if you get a thirty, you're gonna get funded. If you get a, you know. If you get basically. Um. Yeah, if you get a zero, you're not gonna get funded for the most part. So I I I just think that that from a policy standpoint, that that's maybe, you know, we need to give C-TAC a little bit more um. Key in the substance, because what I I I will just be completely honest with you. I rely on. Staff and C-TAC to do that technical analysis. I don't want that burden of saying, hey, how does this cross-section look, Lindsay? I know you have no experience in road construction, but like weigh in on this. Um, so I think those two things, we either need to have, and maybe both, we either need to have. A little bit of a dilution where that safety score is concerned, or we need to have a more robust discussion at the C-TAC level.
Can I, can I just clarify? So the. The C-TAC scoring is really a data-driven. Kind of hard-coded criteria. And. And so you can change that. And and you're right, it does. It does. I don't think a high C-C-TAC store. Would make it. Uh, I mean, I think the mayor's weight could override that, but it, but it would be hard. So it it's probably a question for you, because early, when we first did this process back in two thousand eight. And quite honestly, to some degree, what the state legislature envisioned. Is a process that's entirely data-driven. You know, scoring. That there's no ambiguity. And so we, we actually had a process that was much more, more than just the way here. There was a lot more. And quite honestly, those are hard because. It's hard to get the complexity of these projects to be reflected in a heart, and and we still struggle with that. How do you get to the complexity of a project? Because you have to kind of dumb it down enough and make it simplistic enough. To apply it to a whole range of different projects. And so it does make it hard and awkward. We tried to tune it up. But it it's really kind of a question of. How much do you want kind of a? I I would argue it's it's a fairly objective, data-driven, the C-TAC can review, it's all transparent on what data we use. It's not perfect. But you know, how much do you want that involved in it? Because what we stood up was a hybrid system. And Mayor Simmons from Providence. Was a big advocate of that. He said, way back when, he said, we don't wanna have to be asked. Our, this process to a hard-coded data system. We've been elected to make these decisions, and so we should be able to weigh in on what those priorities are. And that's when we came up with this hybrid system that has a certain amount of weight that's data-driven. They felt that was important to try to reflect. Particularly the urban. That certainly doesn't serve the rural communities, which is why we became a rural set aside to try to address that. But yeah, it's it's a question for you of, do you want a data-driven? Part of this, a scoring part of it? Or do you wanna just have a? Part of this, a scoring part of it, or do you wanna just have a entirely. Uh, by the mayor's ranking, and you know, it'd be a lot easier for us to not do C-TAC at a staff level. But that's kind of a policy question to weigh out, you want a hybrid or do you want less weight? Or the other question is, do you wanna tune up the C-TAC process and have it be different, which is also fair game.
And the alternative is adding a process that's purely policy-driven or politically-driven. Uh, and this body has had some votes over the years that were very politically motivated. And not driven based on, I think, what was going to do traffic and. I just, I think afterward, everybody kind of felt like that wasn't right and, uh, and made some more changes after that. So I, we have had this discussion several times over the years and tried to find the right balance, and I think it's, I think it's valuable to. Continue considering the right balances because maybe we're not there yet, but. I personally really like having the C-TAC score and the objective formulaic review of these projects. As, as a baseline, uh, from, from what we're starting, but we, we could change the way to move on.
So, so how it's set up is. They average the mayor's scores. If you have any score in C-TAC, it is added on to the average. Therefore, you will rate higher than anybody else, you could have. The bottom score, and if you have the high, the high score C-TAC. And everybody else has zero, you will be above. It's, it's about, what is it?
Thirty, it's thirty-nine sixty, so the mayor's hold sixty percent of my score.
But, but that's not the way this is, this is not set up that way, because you're averaging the mayor's score.
Yeah. So.
But if every mayor rated a project that scored high on C-TAC. If every mayor rated it low. Then your C-TAC comes in and rates it high, it goes up high.
Well, it, it probably wouldn't, it'd be in the middle, it would probably drop it to the middle.
Mayor Jacobson, Brian, let me put it in terms that I know as a scientist, you understand, it's a weighted sum.
It's a, it's a weighted, it's, it's. It's a weighted sum.
Yeah.
The mayors are weighted sixty percent or some sixty-some percent and C-TAC is weighted a hundred minus that in terms of.
So I, I wanna be clear, I am not advocating for the mayors having exclusive control over who gets funded. What I'm saying is, these results suggest to me that the C-TAC score is maybe weighted too heavily. I am all about the objective data, but let's not equate that with complete fairness or even validity, because you know, as. All of you know that data can be manipulated and that there's a judgment call in how that da- data is input, there is.
So, so we've already voted, everything is there, Richmond in the rural rated the lowest in mayors. They got fourteen in C-TAC, they went to the highest. It's. That's why I'm saying, is it rated? Again, it's, it's weighted, is it weighted?
Yeah, that's the question. There's no confusion about how we ended up here, I'm saying, should we end up here?
And it's, it's if we trust this data, which having been through this several times.
I, I, that's why I'm waiting for you, because I know you've been here.
Yes, because I made the front page of the paper when it became so political. Because I felt bad for Logan, your predecessor, I felt horrible become it, because it became extremely political. If we want to do a little bit of adjusting on this C-TAC, alright, but my experience, this has taken. The political portion out of it, it really has, having been through this several times, it's taken the political portion. Uh, did this hurt my community this time? Sure it did, but I trust the numbers, so it is what it is. We wanna adjust those a little bit, sure, but we definitely don't wanna take it out, because that has made a major difference. That has made a major difference, and again, having been through it several times, I think it's very fair. I think it's very fair, I think it's, I think it's been very fair. It's, it's way better than it used to be.
I would vote, can I speak? I would vote for us to come up with a little bit, uh, more definitive. Uh, criteria for cross-sections and things like that, I think there is an opportunity for us to. Look at that and, and make it work, just because we talk about it doesn't mean that it's gonna be law, but I think we ought to know. What those possibilities are and see if we can make it happen. And give some, some objective criteria to C-TAC rather than subjective, cuz. I, I'll tell you, some of this process is, is pretty subjective.
I, I think, as I looked at them. At the projects. I think we should have guidelines, but you can't make a hard and fast rule, and I'm talking specifically to the urban. Cuz rural already has their difference guideline, because.
It's okay, but let's talk about it.
But, but the things like, uh. Millville, I think that was a great project, if you've ever been to that intersection, that, that intersection sucks. Is it something for now? No, it's something for vision, there's growth, there's canyon, there's things. I think there's a, that's a good vision project, that something needs to be done, does that meet all of those criterias for? For our urban, I don't know, it, but I think it's a great project. I don't know if it meets our criteria, but it's fantastic.
And don't wait yourself. Well, Mayor Jacobson?
Yeah, I'll be great, thank you, um, I, I have a confession to make while I'm voting on this. In the back of my mind, I try to push it out, push it out, and push it out, I know that I have a conflict of interest as I'm writing these numbers down. It's not a personal conflict of interest, my, my family, I, myself and my family won't benefit personally from this, but my city will, and we all vote. With a conflict of interest, and I dislike conflicts of interest so much that in Nibley City. We wrote an ordinance that said the mayor can't develop property while he or she is the mayor, can't subdivide property while he or she is the mayor. State code allows that, we said, we don't, we don't, we don't like that, and it doesn't matter in any other town, I'm not worried about the other town, but I. I dislike conflicts of interest, and it's like I can't, I can't do something for. There, there is a pull between the, what's good for Nibley and what's good for the county. And so if there was some over, that's an overarching goal, if there was some way, I don't have any thing to specifically success, suggest. Beyond having an outside consultant, which I think we tried on the cog master plan. Have somebody completely outside come in and not, I mean, not have that conflict of interest, and I don't think we all, I don't. From that discussion, I'm not sure that went over so well, but certainly, I admit, the C-TAC has a conflict of interest and the mayors have a conflict. Conflict of interest.
And honestly, the legislature set it up that way, they, they said the cog is steward of this. And the cog, knowing full well that the cog will have its own applications and. The state legislature sort of detailed how that would happen.
I'll blame it on that, man.
To, to me, Ed's been through this for sixteen years, almost sixteen. And it, it means a lot, because eventually, what he's, what he has told me, he, then eventually over time, it works itself out. That's basically what you said.
And, and going along with what you just said, is there bias in the way you vote? Yes. It works out and it evens out, and again, it evens out, whether it's C-TAC, whether it's the mayors, it evens out, will it ever be perfect? No. Is it way better than it was? Yes, I don't think there needs to be a whole lot of fixing, folks, I really don't.
Could, can we get past this, can we get past this part where, where? Anybody, Jess or Jeff, if they have heard message to give us that our project is crap. That they don't have to feel like they may get targeted from us.
Yeah.
They should never have that if.
The one way to give us that cover is, is to bake in some standards, we'll defend it fiercely if you, if you give us.
You can make a formula for this kind of analysis.
Cuz it, it would be hard, because I think Mayor, Mayor Herr, his project is, is fantastic, but how do you cover that one in? In that standard.
We had, I met with, uh, Jeff and Jesse an hour before this meeting, discussed just this. Uh, their biggest concern is, politically, it can be bad for them. If they rile a bunch of mayors up, and that's not what they wanna do. So the only way we can fix this is to put some standards on the table and put concrete. Information in the manual that they can use to, to do exactly what you're asking.
Okay, but I think the alternative to these guys riling up the mayors is me riling up the mayors when I don't really have a dog in the fight. Like, why is that onus on me to say, hey, I don't think that project is great, here's why. I'm not gonna be defensive about that, if you come to North Logan and you say, you guys need to wait on this project, it's not ready yet, or you guys need to contribute.
What you're asking to do.
And that's them to do.
You're asking them to give their obje- an objective opinion, or to your, you're asking them to prejudge it before we do.
Yeah, I am, because that's what the C-TAC score even is, is hey, here's our technical analysis of this. I don't think that that's out of line.
Which is information for us to use.
Sure.
To make our final vote.
I just want that to be a little bit more robust, that's what I'm advocating for, is to say, like, to be brutally honest. And I, and I, like I said, if that, if that affects North Logan, I'm fine with that, I wanna hear your actual opinions. And not putting it into a computer and spitting out a result.
This is a question that has some direct, so Jesse?
Well, I was gonna say, and part of that, again, when you look at the C-TAC scoring, there's three different categories that take those points. So there's a congestion piece that's worth fifteen, there's nine points for advanced cord or preservation, and there's fifteen points for safety. So again, the congestion's based on ADTs and based on highway capacity manual, what an estimated. Capacity of that road is based on what, the hangland and the safety, we've pushed that out to the safety consultant, so again, it takes a little bit out of. Our hand and it gives it to an expert and say, hey, use your judgment, every, he gets all the plan sets, he gets. The feedback on what do you say your safety improvements are to your project, and he, and he runs an analysis, so. Again, some parts of the, do we like this cross-section, do we like that, that's not associated in those point scoring system. The point doesn't, there's no points at this point for, what's your cross-section, what's, we're looking at purely, is it safety and is it congestion? And is it advanced cord or preservation, so again, this year we did the, which I think might be the first time we've done it, was the log of everything. They gave the opportunity for C-TAC and that body to go through it, we added comments as well, what are concerns, what are questions, allow the city to address those comments.
Was that the natural log or the ba- base tan log?
Hey, a different log, the yellow log.
I would think that that might address some of your concerns, so that, that review log. Cog staff introduced issues of concern to that. Uh, we, some of those comments were for us, it was also from the other C-TAC members, and then the cities had a chance to respond. And, and then cog staff had a final word, so you know, we talked about maybe, uh. This year it was kind of contracted, and you didn't have a lot of time to review that, but that would elevate those issues of concern. For your benefit. Does that make sense? I don't. I mean, I don't know how else. Cuz it is hard for staff. To systematically over the course of s- seven or eight years, make every one of you mad at us. Cuz that's what we'll do, we'll sandbag your project one year and yours the next, and it is hard for staff. You know, to be put in that position to do that, now we raise, we would raise a lot of concerns and particularly eligibility concerns. Doesn't meet the policy, we, we have a, an ability to review that with the executive committee. A lot of these questions come up in that, where we review it, bounce it, bounce it off of them and say, is this an eligibility issue? Should we chase this application out? That all happens with C-TAC, but, but it, it is hard, the other option would be to. Uh, I mean, hire some outside review of applications and do a report on that, but I'm not sure that.
No, that's not at all what I'm looking for, not at all.
I know, maybe what is not being seen here is exactly what you just brought up, on the executive committee, when they have issues with their project. They bring it up to us and they say, this is a concern to us, and the executive commission, committee. Makes a decision if it needs to be brought to the cog or if we can handle it ourselves. So maybe that's something you're not seeing that does actually take place.
Maybe, maybe. Craig, maybe staff could review that process for us. So that we understand it a little better, the C-TAC process.
So, so what happens is, when applications are turned in, uh, we take that application information. And there is first of all, an eligibility review, so Jesse and I go through the applications. And, and, and say, are there any just core eligibility issues for this project, they don't meet the cog standards. Publicarians, whatever, we, we list those out. We meet with the executive committee and we review those with them, we say, here's what we found. Do these raise, are these to the magnitude that they should make an application, those are really kind of a threshold, are. An application move forward in the process or can't move, once that happens, we put the information on the website, all the plan sets. Uh, every, all the information we have about the projects, put it on the, on the website, so it's full public transparency. And then we kick into the C-TAC scoring part, which staff works with the safety consultant to, to review the projects. And come up with his safety score, uh, that is somewhat, uh, data-driven and somewhat judge, professional judgment. We, uh, we collect on, for instance, the congestion part of that, we collect the. The, 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 uh, volume data that is used to assign points, the level of congestion on that. And then we take those draft numbers to the C-TAC, and we say, this is what we've come up with. Here's the data that we use to get the, assign those points, the safety consultant in that C-TAC meeting reviews his safety score. Uh, I mean, a lot of that's data-driven, so it's, it's not a, a subjective thing, so someone would have to challenge, no, you got this data wrong. Which is fine, if we did, we, in fact, this year we actually changed a few because we, we got new information. And so then that goes in, and at, at the end of the day, we ask the C-TAC to vote, formally vote. And approve this funding recommendation to you, and that's when those scores, those C-TAC scores are finalized. They come to you in that first presentation meeting. As the C-TAC recommendations of them overseeing the data-driven objective. Cuz I would argue there's not a lot of subjectivity in that, there is some judgment, but it's, it's all transparent and you can see it. Uh, and then that is made available to you when you do your scoring and the project presentation. And then we get to this point, which is adding those C-TAC scores to the, uh, the cog member rankings. And you, uh, consider approval of the overall thing, did that answer your question, Mayor?
Well, I, I just think that, to Lindsay's point, it, all the mayors could rank something really low. But because the C-TAC score is high, they end up with a high score in getting it, when in reality. In, in the judgment of the mayors, it shouldn't have been funded, and I'm not sure that we're gonna solve that tonight. But it's certainly worth more discussion for us to talk about what it is. What the technical specs are that are, that are being used, and maybe to David's point. That we can put in some standards in there, and maybe they're not hard and fast, but it's at least something to measure against. Which protects you, because there's, there's a standard there, and so that's what we're saying, does it meet the standard? Yes or no, if it meets, if it doesn't meet the standard, is it because there are other mitigating circumstances? Well, then, let's talk about the, what those circumstances are, but at least we've got something down. That gives us something to measure about, measure two. Make sense?
I think this is actually kind of an interesting example of the Richmond project, in fact, that it got C-TAC points, because normally. You know, the rural projects aren't expected to get many points if any from the C-TAC process. Uh, and, and so we might see the, the fact that that project earned points that pushed it ahead. We might see that and question. We might see that and question whether or not that means the system is broken, or we might also look at it and say, maybe that means the system worked. Uh, because the fact that that Richmond project earned C-TAC points as a rural project. Needs that there was something more to it, I, and I don't know what the breakdown was for why it got the C-TAC point, but I'm guessing it had to do with safety. Um, and we, we might look at that and say, the C-TAC process actually worked. And pushed this project ahead because it met this other criteria that we previously determined wasn't working.
Good point.
Yeah, our system, if you build a new road, you get congestion points, so that was one part of it, they're building an essentially a new road, cause it was dirt. And, and, and then, and then they did get some safety points.
You know, three years ago, we had more money than we had projects, we had no problems. Unfortunately, we have more projects than we have money, so we're always gonna be debating on how to do this more. So I appreciate that information has come forward tonight, and obviously, wanna take it from this, we need to take a look at our C-TAC. Uh, is the waiting has impacted our scores as the mayor, correct?
Yeah.
And we also need to look at establishing criteria that can support our staff. In making sure that they're protected when they say, no, this doesn't really qualify, and this is why. We as a cog, we've got, we've got to be willing to reflect that, by doing that, we're putting in our manual, state, that's how it's gotta be.
And I guess that's all I'm looking for, is just, hey, can we reevaluate this and just take a look and just consider it? I, I don't wanna be misunderstood that I'm advocating for it to go back to a mayor-only vote, I'm not. And, you know, I, I think that that's kind of a difficult argument to, to counter, cause it's not what I'm espousing here. All I'm saying is, can we look at this, can we look at it and just based on how things played out this year? And say, is that the weight that we wanna give it? Is the process working for us as mayors, and is it reflected? Of the kind of projects that we want to fund? There shouldn't really be any reluctance or defensiveness about that, in my opinion. I'm happy to give clarification and cover for staff. To, to really give us your honest input and your technical know-how on this. So that's all I'm looking for, is just like, hey, let's talk about this. We have a, a year till the next vote, let's, let's use that year to say, you know, let's make this process work for us.
I think it's important to note as well, that all of the mayors who have spoken up about this. Don't really, their project is gonna get funded no matter what, so it isn't something where people are saying. Um, this is sour grapes, I'm not getting my project funded, so I'm gonna argue about it. I, I just think it's like Lindy, Lindsay said, let's look at it, we might not change anything at all. But let's, let's be a, a little bit more informed maybe about how we're making these decisions.
And Mayor Beas.
And, and I'm one that, that did come on the, on the short end of this one, however. Looking at, and this is why I say, let's be real careful, I, let's definitely review it. Where it's fact-driven, I am pleased with the C-TAC portion. I do look at Richmond's score, uh, I'm the first one that lost out for that, but I look at it, safety-wise. That project way more than mine, congestion way more than mine, traffic way more than mine. I'm crazy not to see that that makes sense, and I trust it because it's fact-driven, and I've seen it work. Several times the last few years, but if there's questions among the people, let's, let's look at it and I. I would, I would be really careful though, because I think it's worked pretty well, and I think it worked here. I do, I think it worked.
Mayor, you okay? Quickly plant these two other seeds?
Yeah. Okay, first, we're gonna pa- we'll pass around two things, then we'll have a little discussion, again, we know it's already, yeah, thank you, Megan. There's two different things, so we'll take.
We separate, there's two things on there.
Yeah, you'll take one and pass it, then they can just leave.
Yeah, so start with that one.
The one thing you received was some different cross-sections, and this came as part of the transportation master plan. That just wrapped up, so they made some recommendations for some cross-sections. So again, we're not saying that, that these would be hardcoded, but that's, again, we talked about that a little bit more today in tonight's meeting of. What are some cross-sections, are there some guidance, is there some direction that wants to be given, so. We invite you to look at these, maybe we have some type of reference where, hey, this is a typical cross-section, and if you wanna vary from it, then. You provide an explanation of why that doesn't work for you, or, so again, we're not, tonight we're not voting on anything, there's no final approvals, but just putting the seed up. As you look through these, maybe, maybe there's a little bit of edits to get, or a few changes, but kind of going in the direction of, hey, this is the typical. Cross-section for roads funded by the cog. There's probably a few extras, I know a few of them made them back to the. The peanut gallery, those in the back, but, so again, that's one just to kind of, kind of look at. In future meetings, we'll have more discussion on, do we like these ones, will there be changes? Do we wanna try to tie people down to a certain thing? So.
The second chain could have you start to chew on. If you recall, we did the cog master plan, and it, it, uh, worked. Not perfectly, and if the decision support tool, uh, where it did help prioritize. Particularly in the urban areas, it had a set of criteria that looked out long-term in the thirty-year horizon. That kind of puts some level of priority to projects. What we're asking you now, remember when that came out, the question was, what do we do with it? Uh, we said, we're not gonna do anything with it this year. Uh, but we'll discuss possible changes or how we may use it in the future. And so one idea that has come up, and I wanna make this clear, this is talking about next year possible policy changes. What I'm talking about here, uh, doesn't affect the rural jurisdictions at all, you're health harmless, or. It doesn't influence you, but, but, uh, the, the CMPO. Took that cog master plan and used it to phase our, our, what we call our regional tail. So if you look at that handout, that map behind is that phasing that took that cog process. And for roads of, local roads of regional significance in the urban area. It, only in the urban area, it attempted to crosswalk that into a phasing. Now that phasing is a rough representation of priority, right? Everything in phase one, you could. It would suggest that, from the CMPO's perspective, that those projects are sort of the top priority. Right now, the cog has a policy that a project in, in, you know, in the urban area. To be eligible to apply has to be in phase one, two, or three of the plan. So if you look at that plan, it would have to be in one of the colors, either red, green, or blue to be eligible to apply. What, what we've discussed is not changing that policy. You could still, an urban project, could still, it has to be in one of those three phases to be eligible to apply, which is a. Policy we have now, but the change that is being proposed is to take ten of the points. That are part of the overall process and assign those based on what phase it is in. So if your project is in phase one in an urban area. This would only apply to urban projects, uh, you would get the full ten points for the phasing criteria. It would be, reflecting that that plan, uh. I guess reflecting the use of that plan. And you see the key down at the bottom of that, so what we went ahead and did is just for a hypothet- hypothetical what if. We turn the crank on at the twenty twenty-two year and the twenty twenty-one year. And said, what if we were to apply this system retroactively of assigning ten points for urban projects? Based on the phase of the CMPO plan that it was in, what would that look like? And that, what you see there is a result of what that would look like. Over on the, on the right, you can see a summary of the original ranking. And how it would rank if we had that criteria applied. And highlighted in yellow on the last two columns are the projects that would have changed. Some go up, some rural projects by virtue of urban projects changing, get changed in the mix. Uh, but this is a question for you of, do you want the phasing of the CMPO plan? Uh, to be accounted for, and so what that would mean is, you could still apply if you're in phase three. You would just have a tougher road to hold, and the mayors would have to kind of collectively. Overcome that with their ranking, or somehow make that up, does that makes, doesn't mean you can't apply, doesn't mean you can't be funded. But if you're not in phase one, it makes it harder based on that criteria. This is purely up to you, whether you wanna use the CMPO plan this way, and we have made it clear. Cause those of you on the CMPO, remember that I sort of rushed you to approve the CMPO plan? Cause we were, uh, racing that air quality deadline, so we are gonna have a chance. Now, we, we don't amend this plan very often, every four years we do it as a matter of practice. And we don't wanna get in a mode where we amend it too frequently, but because we, the CMPO approved that. In a, in a fairly rushed way, we are gonna entertain an amendment process in the next, uh. Few months for the plan. So we're just planting a seed to see if this is the way you want to proceed. If you want to use the CMPO long-range plan and the prioritization process, the cog. Master plan, and again, if you wanna see that fully, you just go to the CMPO website. Look at our twenty fifty regional transportation plan, and it's a tab for, for both our plan and the cog master plan. The cog master plan is crosswalking into our plan, so they're essentially in sync. But that's a policy question of whether you want to step up the use of that plan to give. Extra points to projects that are in an early phase in the urban area.
I think we should definitely put it on the agenda and discuss it.
Yeah, there's no vote on this tonight.
Yeah, there's no vote.
Purely getting the discussion started with work between now and next April, or work on any changes to the. To the program manual for next year's funding cycle.
That's the, that's the point I wanna make is. You're getting a lot of data tonight, after the discussion we've had, most of you, by the looks of your face, are all, okay, I've had enough. I understand, I, I blame you a bit, but the question I have now is. Do we want, how long do we wanna put this off? I don't know about the rest of you, I get pretty busy in my day-to-day mayor job and everything else. Next April, it's gonna be pretty hard for me to remember what we talked about tonight. So do we really wanna put this off until next April? Or do you wanna hold this a bit sooner? Maybe a couple times, to come to a better understanding of what this is gonna be, Mayor here.
Can we submit our thoughts to you? And then maybe come with a discussion after you receive thoughts from the different mayors.
Sure.
Will make it a little bit easier and better to discuss if we do that.
How about if we do that, and then I will, according to those thoughts, I will set up a meeting. Where we can get together and take further action. So we don't come to next year and try to remember what we did this year.
Yeah.
So just, uh, big picture wise, something to keep in mind is. Uh, we're kind of planting seeds of concepts here, eventually this will have to be crosswalked into our official policy manual. We, we, we don't wanna crosswalk and work on coding everything up. That may not be a priority, so as we go through this process, I'm not saying we need to do it tonight. But you know, if we can get a sense of what things resonate with you, that you want us to draft up in some language in that policy manual. Uh, that's kind of what we're looking for is, is what, what things, uh, should we really focus our time, does that make sense?
Okay, one of them I would say that we wanna look at, that then brings it, bring to the table, what in every other year. Uh, plan would be, what the benefits would be, what the benefits and what the negative side effects would be. Of an every other year, fund dispersal, instead of every year. The next thing would be a more thorough understanding of the impact of this if we go this way. Am I understanding correctly with everybody, if you're speaking right, if not. The third thing would be, is exactly what we're talking about earlier, how we put. Standards together so that it protects these individuals, and also goes the direction we want it to go. I understand, not everybody's gonna be happy every time, that's impossible. Uh, that's, that just isn't gonna work, so. Some are gonna be, be disappointed all the time, others are gonna see the delight, say, okay, maybe I've worked with this, so.
Can we put the document in, in Google Docs or Teams where we can see what each other's working on, or?
Sure, yeah, we could put, you're talking the policy manual, yeah, we could, we could load up the policy manual and. Doesn't be a good idea, and just insert your comments strategically where you want them. I also offer, you know, any of these seeds that we planted, cause it is a lot to take in. We would be happy as staff to meet with you offline, at least talk through a little more of them. Uh, before the meeting where something might be proposed, but at some point, we have to decide. Of what things do we try to translate into the policy manual in terms of draft changes to take? And some things are easy that you might suggest, but some of these more policy questions, you know, we, we need to get your guidance before. We spend a lot of time on that.
I would say standards and stuff like that need to be agreed upon by the whole. We don't react to just individual comments or suggestions, it's gotta be, standards gotta be agreed upon by the cog members.
Again, last, we did every, I mean, we go through this process every year, last year, that first meeting in January or whatever, we had that list where we took everyone's input. We put it on the board, we went through them, we had those discussions, so again, or, it's an open body, it's the input from everyone, everyone's from perspectives, ideas. Has been in this for a different length of time, so we welcome everyone's ideas, they've seen what worked, but hasn't worked, we don't wanna undo stuff that's been already undone and redone, but. Again, if you have comments, if, we can plus on the others, so everyone can comment, like the comments one addressed to. Mayor Hidalgo or for the staff, we are willing to take those and we can bring them up in the next meeting and work through what changes we wanna see for future. Awesome years.
Do, do you wanna open this up to staff as well for comments, or how?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, anybody, yeah, okay.
Of course, we want everybody that can give us feedback.
Uh, as far as discussion, I think that's good for this evening, we got a transportation plan that.
Just a quick pitch for this, so. This that I handed out, every, we're unique in the state that all the transportation planning agencies, UGAI. All the MPOs, uh, which there's four of us in the state, bring our regional plans together into one unified plan. Uh, and it doesn't address all the projects in the rural areas, in particular, but the, the urban areas it does. And the state just, uh, or we just debuted this plan to the legislature last week. And so I'd encourage you to go look at this, there's a QR code, I mean, it's really the website, and it's a pretty well-done website. Uh, but if you look at that, there's our plans, and it's the same as our regional plan that the CMPO adopted. That's integrated in a statewide level, there's a lot of great information about funding. And kind of how much funding we have statewide, where the gaps are, uh, where the needs are. I'd encourage you to spend time and maybe do a deeper dive in this, cause it, it really is. Uh, kind of a one-stop shop for transportation statewide, and kind of painting the bigger picture. Issues rela- related to this, and it's crazy hard to do. Issues related to this. And it's crazy hard to do. If you think about it, to bring all these agencies together with a common set of financial assumptions and bringing these plans together. But it really has paid dividends over time and the reason it's paid dividends. Is it suggests to our state legislature that we have our act together. As as planning agencies, that we have a plan and it gives them the confidence. To invest in that plan and our state has stepped up to that challenge. Uh, so it helps uh, sort of give that confidence level statewide. So if you have a chance, I'd encourage you to go poke around at it. There's different tabs. That look at different things, but the the real core of it is there's an interactive map that you can zoom in on. You can see the projects, active transportation, transit, roadway projects, U Doc projects. You see it all. U Doc does the rural area plans and the M P Os do the urban area plans. So that's my final pitch. Hey, I've got a question before we, or two parts before we leave. Go back to the uh. Draft. Sorry to bring this, that one with the blue. Yeah, so up in the top right. We have the county oversight inspection at one point five percent. They're taking a hundred and two thousand, almost a hundred and three thousand dollars. From our funds. At our next meeting, we don't have to go through this now because we're here so late. Can we get an understanding of why they're taking that? Question.
It's just an admin charge and I support that.
That helps pay that. I know that's my, that's salary, benefits, insurance, that covers.
That's an overhead burn rate.
Well, it's also when we hired the safety consultant to do the analysis. So there's some other expenses, but a lot of that is.
I thought when we approved the budget and expenses, that was the safety consultant.
This comes up. Again, this is where C M P O is and cog are two separate.
Well, I know, but we had to pay the bills.
But that's called, that's C M P O.
We didn't do that in Bob.
No, so that goes into the, that money goes in county budget and used for to pay that out of that's not seen or.
Okay, that answers that one. The second part would have been, since we have so many projects that haven't been started, we should have. Quite a lot of money in there. And what we've done in the C M P O, we've been able to find fund studies and things like that. Can we get? Some sort of accounting for all of the interest that we've made in in that so that we know. Going forward, how much we've had in there?
We don't get any of it.
Excuse me?
In the past, it goes into the county's overall account and uh. We don't get, the cog doesn't have the ability to reallocate that interest. We've raised that a few times. And haven't really gotten an answer on that of why.
Aren't these cog tax dollars?
Well, it's a question of whether they're restricted or not and. I mean, we, we.
Who's our attorney? Don't say somebody from the county.
It's it's like, because the county collects that tax and it goes into the county.
Just because you collect it doesn't mean it's yours. They collect the hyper city tax too. Doesn't mean it's theirs.
The county executive in that meeting, give him an assignment.
Maybe it's going to his salary.
I don't know, maybe, maybe it's just me, but I I think we should.
Yeah, the decision of the finance department in the past, when I raised it was, they don't view it as a restricted account. And then it just goes into the county general.
Is it segregated, our cog funding?
Uh, I mean.
Like, would it be easy to identify what the what the interest is on that account? Like, is it?
I think it's co-mingle with other county funds. I mean, I could be wrong, but.
It must still be easy to figure it out, though.
Let's figure that out.
One time we did look at that. Yeah.
Maybe we can ask for a refund.
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
Ask the questions, but. But not to get answers, but we could try. We can get an answer?
Yeah, I'll check.
I'll do some research, but I think it's a need to fix if uh, if the county council budget, they can move that interest from. One line to another line.
They were not willing to do that, so maybe it's different environment.
Well, willing's one thing obligated, it might be another thing. You know? Of course, they're not willing.
What's the individual's name that the county hired? It's kind of an outside auditor. Remember her name? We met with her and asked her to pursue the question. And never, it it never materialized to an answer.
Well, that's handy.
More discussion? Motion to adjourn?